Go ahead and call the meeting to order. A regular meeting of the Mayor and Council at time of six thirty-four. Roll call, all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Jackson. I'm saying he is on his way.
Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Powell, will you give us an invocation, please?
Let's pray. Father, we are grateful to gather again in this place for the important affairs of the city. Lord, this city is a beautiful place this time of year. We give you thanks for the renewal of the season. But this week, Lord, we always have to come back to the King of this place. And, Lord, we just honor you for sacrifices and wonder that just go beyond our imagination. And, Lord, he gives us hope that goes really to the core of everything that we yearn for. Lord, we praise you for those things. And in that greatness, Lord, share your kindness and your favor on this place, on the people who work here, on those who lead here, on those who serve here, Lord, and those who protect this place. We ask your special blessing for the kingdom. And we pray our prayer in his name, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Tony. Okay, I do have a few announcements. All of these meetings take place in the community room unless otherwise stated. Of course, we're having our council meeting tonight. Municipal Court, April sixteenth at one P.M. Good Friday Holiday is April the eighteenth for the city. Planning Commission, April the twenty-second, six P.M. Our next council work session is May the first, six thirty P.M. Main Street Commission Meeting, May the thirteenth at eight A.M. Historic Preservation Meeting, May thirteenth at six P.M. And our next council meeting is May twentieth at six thirty P.M. We have presentations coming up, employee introduction and recognition. Mr. Taylor?
Good evening. My privilege to come before Mayor and Council this evening to be able to recognize Captain Chase Roberts. He earned his company officer certification from the Georgia Association of Fire Chiefs. Captain Roberts has been with the department for about five years, a little over five years. He is responsible for our operations division. He takes care of both stations, daily staffing, apparatus, hydrants, fire and EMS training, to say just a few other things. In order to receive this certification, Chase attended just over three hundred hours of classroom education to be eligible to receive this. He is our first company officer in our department to receive this certification and one of only approximately fifty to receive it so far in the state of Georgia. Chase is an exemplary fire officer with a long career ahead of him in the fire service. With his drive and his attention to detail, there's no doubt he'll make a great chief fire officer or fire chief one day. As a member of the Georgia Association of Fire Chiefs Executive Board of Directors and his chief, I'm honored to get to present this to Captain Roberts this evening, especially with his wife, Lindsay, and the kids here to support him and all the guys on his shift here to be with him to show support. So, with no further, I guess.
I'd like to present you with your certification as a company officer.
Thank you, Chief.
How you could be there that night, but there.
Hey, Chief, you want to get a photo?
I was, yes, sir, I was hoping we'd be able to get a photo.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other recognition? All right, Downtown Rundown, Amber.
Good evening. This is the rundown for April, downtown rundown for April. I'm going to start with the wrap-up for the April fifth weekend. We had a very busy day on April the fifth in downtown. We started the morning out with the citywide cleanup. We had a good turnout, and I'd like to thank everyone that came out to help that morning. From the cleanup, we transitioned to hosting a pit stop for Bike Ride Across Georgia. There were around eleven hundred riders that came between ten-thirty and three-thirty that day. During my time helping out at the tent, I felt like I was back at summer camp making like two hundred peanut butter and jelly sandwiches all at once, you know? All of the riders that came up, they said Social Circle was their favorite stop. They always liked stopping here, so they were all very appreciative. And it was just a really great day. The weather was beautiful that day. So, to end the day, we had our opening night for Friendship, for our Friendship Park Summer Concert Series. The eighty-eighters were there. They put on a great show, and we had a packed park. So, many thanks to my staff and to the Main Street volunteers, Susan and Ann, for helping out on such a busy but unfilled day. Next on the rundown is our Social Circle Day Festival. It's this Saturday, April the nineteenth, and we will host the Second Annual Social Circle Day Festival in downtown from ten A.M. to four P.M. We have around sixty-eight vendors. They're offering a little bit of everything, plus we have some really great food vendors that will be there, too. We'll have a DJ playing music throughout the day, and then we'll have an Easter egg hunt in Friendship Park starting at eleven-thirty. Please make plans to join us on Saturday. Hopefully, the weather will be beautiful. And then last, and this makes me a little sad, is youth council. Tomorrow is our last day with our youth council kids. They will finish up with public works, take a trip to the water plant in the morning, and then our graduation recognition has been moved to the work session on May the first. So, each one of them will get an invitation tomorrow to take home to their parents. We're inviting their parents to come along that night, and staff from the high school has been invited. And so, we'll recognize each one of the students and then just hear a little bit from them what being a part of the youth council program has meant to them. And I must say, this has been such a wonderful experience to have with these kids, and so I'm looking forward to following them and seeing where they go in the future and then looking forward to the next class that we have for the next year also. That's all I have for the rundown tonight.
Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Okay, not aware of any citizen requests. Are there any council requests? Hearing none, I'll entertain an agenda approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Teresa and a second from Nathan. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right, we have a series of public hearings coming up. And before I begin with that, I'd like to read you our public hearing procedure, how we'll move forward tonight. We have a number of public hearings tonight for zoning matters. As each agenda item is brought forth, city staff will present the application. A public hearing will be opened, and the applicant will give their presentation. There are ten minutes total. Then anyone who signed in to speak in favor of each application will be heard and limited to ten minutes total, not each. Then anyone who signed in to speak against the application will be heard and limited to ten minutes total, not each. Once the applicant has been given an opportunity for rebuttal with any time remaining, the public hearing will close, and the matter will come before council for a vote. With that, our first rezone, I'll open the public hearing on that. So, rezone two oh two five zero zero three, six sixty-two, six eighty-four, and six thirty-four, Wildwood Drive, also known as Tax Parcels, S.C. zero nine zero zero one eight B zero zero, S.C. zero nine hundred one zero B zero zero, S.C. zero nine zero zero two zero, and S.C. zero nine zero zero one nine. It's a request to rezone from Residential District fifteen, R-15, to Agricultural A.G. to Residential Medium Density RMD for the purpose of building townhomes. The applicant withdrew this application, so I'll entertain a vote from the council to accept that withdrawal.
So, blue.
Second.
Second from, or first from Steve, second from Tyson. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, next rezone, two oh two five dash zero zero four, which is four sixty-four East High Tower Trail and Zero Vine Circle, also known as Tax Parcels, S.C. one five zero one five four and S.C. one five zero one five five A zero zero. Request to rezone from RMD A.G. to R-15 to satisfy plat, plat combination requirements. Ashley?
Right, so this rezone request is to, let's see. So, this rezone request is to go from a combination of residential medium density and agricultural to R-15 on that L-shaped property. This would actually help clean up a split zone lot within the city limits. So, it helps the city out as well, clean up a little bit of a mess that we have going on zoning-wise on that parcel. The reason the applicant requested this is in order to recombine those lots as shown in, the pointer doesn't work on the TV, but on this plat over here on the right side of your screen. As shown on the proposed combination plat, approximately point nine acres of land from Tax Parcel S.C. one five zero one five five A zero zero would be combined with Tax Parcel S.C. one five zero one five four as a part of the proposed rezone. There's no immediate plan proposed for the property following the rezone and the recombination plat. However, if any plan did exist, it would be to further subdivide the property at a later time to construct another single-family detached home, which matches with a lot of the uses around there. Regarding public services and utilities, there wouldn't be any issues created either as a result of the proposed zoning. And I just want to point out that this is consistent with the future land use map designation. This is actually the neighborhood's character area, so R-15 would fit better than the agricultural designation for this area. And staff recommends approval of the request to rezone from RMD and Agricultural to Residential fifteen. And the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval of the request to rezone from RMD and Ag to R-15.
Any questions for Ashley? Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak? All right, I'll close that public hearing and bring it to the council for a vote.
Anybody speaking in favor or?
Well, no one signed in, but I will ask if anyone is here to speak in favor or against. Hearing none, bring it to the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Tyson and a second from Teresa. Is there further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right. Next item is rezone zero zero five, one fifty Ronthrill Drive, also known as Tax Parcel S.C. one three zero zero eight seven. Request to rezone from RMD to Business to allow commercial tenant spaces. Ashley?
Yes, so this request is to rezone the property from RMD to the Business District for the purpose of developing some commercial tenant spaces, as you can see on the site plan again down here in this bottom right corner of the screen. The proposed rezone of this property would be for the purpose to have those commercial tenant spaces that would serve industrial service tenants by way of another special use approval later on the agenda. The property's character area is defined as central historic, which includes Business as an appropriate zoning designation. Therefore, the proposed rezone would be in line with the city's future land use map. The proposed development also aligns with the allowable uses outlined in our principal use tables. There's currently a six-inch water main on North Tower Road and a two-inch water main along Ronthrill in the front of this property. The developer would be responsible for upgrading the service in order to meet the water capacity needs for this type of proposed development. Developer would also be responsible for addressing stormwater drainage issues on the property as well prior to development. This property is also actually in the watershed protection overlay, so if approved, the developer would be responsible for ensuring that they abide by all those standards, including that twenty-five percent impervious surface cap, which was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting as well. Again, like I said, this is in line with our future land use map. And staff recommends approval of the request to rezone from RMD to Business, and the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval of the request to rezone from RMD to Business.
Open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this request. Anyone here to speak in opposition of this request? Hearing none, close the public hearing and bring it to the council for a vote.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, a motion to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission by Councilmember Shelton and a second by Councilmember Boyd. Is there further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right. Next is S.U. twenty twenty-five zero zero one, also at one fifty Ronthrill Drive, also known as Tax Parcel S.C. one three zero zero eight seven. Request for special use to allow industrial service tenant in a business zoning district. Ashley?
So, this is on the same property. And in order to have some of the tenants that were proposed during our pre-application meeting with the applicant, such as HVAC, electricians, pest control, things of that nature, you do have to get a special use in the Business District. Those are classified as industrial service tenants in our U.D.C. So, the applicant also had to request a special use. Under Section three point four point four of the city's U.D.C., a laundry facility is also identified as an industrial service, so that would include the laundromat also on that property. The developer intends to add additional commercial tenant spaces on the property behind the facility as well. If approved, that would align with the uses outlined in Section two point three point one. The character area for this property, again, is central historic, so that would include some of these neighborhood commercial businesses or tenants as a compatible use. The main thing that's different on this staff report is the developer would be, a water line with fire hydrants would also need to be placed on the property per the two thousand eighteen International Fire Code. So, they would also be required to install curb and gutter to address the drainage issues with the ditches as well. So, staff also recommends approval on the request for a special use to allow for industrial service tenants. We think it would fill a market void and keep some of these types of tenants out of our downtown businesses. And then the Planning Commission recommendation was to unanimously recommend approval of the request for the special use to allow for the industrial service tenant, but they also wanted to add the condition that no vehicle sales, repairs, or services shall be allowed on the property, and the applicant was okay with that at the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, questions? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak?
Good evening. I am here, and I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have. I think that Ashley's done a great job kind of explaining what we intend to do. When we were before Planning Commission, there was a lot of concern about vehicle sales and vehicles just in general. So, it was actually kind of a unanimous request to go ahead and exclude that. If that was something they were concerned with, that wasn't something we were trying to do. I think it'll be a really great improvement for that section of town. It'll create more tax revenue, and it's really going to fill a special void that we have. We've got a lot of large-scale buildings for commercial tenants, and then we've got a lot of what I would consider more service-based spaces for hair salons, you know, real estate offices, attorney's offices, but we don't really have anything that kind of is that missing piece that we hope this will become. So, instead of having the delay for a business coming in and having to wait to get before y'all to get that conditional use, that was the thought when I met with Ashley, was just to kind of get ahead of it so we know what is allowable, so we're not burning time. But that's it. Thank y'all.
Any questions for Ms. Morris?
So, Taylor, for the record, you guys are okay with the stipulations?
Oh, yeah, totally comfortable with it. We never intended to put anything in there like that.
And the water line?
Do what?
And the water line as well?
We're going to figure it out.
All right.
We're going to figure it out. Y'all tell us what we got to do, and we're going to figure it out. But with the impervious situation, with having to do something different, it really is counterproductive to allow an automotive, you know, any kind of industry like that when we're going to be limited on our pervious pavement. We'll figure it out. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this special use request? Anyone here wishing to speak against this request? Hearing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for a vote.
Make a motion to take the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Steve and a second from Teresa. Is there further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, which brings us to our final public hearing for the evening, which is a variance two oh two five zero zero one, three twenty-three Vine Circle, also known as Tax Parcel S.C. one seven zero zero eight zero. Request for a variance to construct and attach addition onto existing accessory structure. Ashley?
Yes, so this applicant requested a variance from Section three point seven point seven point C seven of the city's U.D.C. to allow for an area greater than twenty-five percent of the main dwelling units' floor area and/or an area of greater than six hundred and fifty square feet to be devoted to a home occupation. This applicant requested that variance. The, as it currently sits, the existing accessory structure being utilized for the home occupation is approximately five thousand square feet, which makes it an existing nonconformity due to its exceeding the size requirements as previously mentioned. But it was constructed prior to the adoption of the U.D.C. The applicant's proposal is to add an additional five thousand square feet onto the building to be used as storage for their cabinet business. They have stated that they would be willing to go smaller with the addition, but they've requested the additional five thousand square feet to ensure they don't run out of space. There are no other residential properties within the area that have accessory structures of this size, and there was a variance given to this property back in, I believe it was, twenty eighteen for the accessory structure. So, a variance was given prior to the adoption of the U.D.C. for the accessory structure and the size that it is now because it's over half the size of the house. If approved, the applicant would be responsible for submitting all appropriate plans for the review and approval prior to beginning construction, as well as ensuring that all setback, land disturbance, and soil and erosion requirements are met. Staff, with variances, there's a couple of things I do want to point out. The, under general consistency under the staff analysis, the variance does not appear to be consistent with the intent of the U.D.C. But the use does not appear to be harmful to the public health, safety, or welfare. And under B, the special conditions, these are all the things that we have to look at when looking at a variance specifically. There do appear to be special conditions and/or circumstances due to the size of the existing structure already exceeding the maximum amount of allowable space. So, it's an existing nonconforming use, so as staff, we wouldn't want to increase that nonconformity. The special conditions do appear to be financial in nature as it serves the base, as it serves for the base operations for the applicant's home occupation. I also wanted to say that approving the requested variance would appear to confer special privilege on the applicant as there are no other properties, again, located in that area with an accessory structure of this size. So, with that, all of that being said, staff does recommend denial of the request for a variance to allow for the addition onto a nonconforming structure for the home occupation use. We will offer a recommendation if you guys choose to approve the requested variance. Staff recommends the following conditions, that the addition cannot exceed five hundred square feet, and no future additions would be able to be made onto the structure. Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of six to one that the request for the variance would be approved with the following condition, and they said the addition shall not exceed twenty-five hundred square feet.
Thank you, Ashley. All right, is the applicant here, and do you wish to speak?
I'm Brandon Walker.
Give us your address, please.
It's three twenty-three Vine Circle. Yeah, I'm just looking at expanding my cabinet shop. We've started doing some prefab stuff, and that takes more space than custom, and things are booming, so.
If we go with the Planning Commission's recommendation, is twenty-five going to be enough? Or do you need more, you think you need more than that?
Well, I mean, I'd like to have more. I mean, you know, I just don't want to run out of space, and I know this is the last. I'm not going to do this again, you know? So, I mean, I'd definitely use it. And if you, I mean, I'm not sure if it would, I mean, if you zoom out, there's, I mean, nobody can see the building worth that. I don't have any, all the landowners around me, their houses are nowhere near, and so. I mean, there's a school being built right next door. The county's got some land right there, it's got the thing, so.
Yeah, because the guy that lives below you, he's a pretty good little ways from you, too.
That's right, yeah. So, I mean, five thousand would be nice, but it's up to y'all.
But he has a business license in the city. You have a business license? He has a business license?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none, close the public hearing and bring it back to the council.
I mean, I say, I mean, where his building is located at, don't nobody see it. I mean, this, this is home-based business. I mean, it's five thousand what he needs. The school right beside it. I would vote for the five thousand. Like I just said, you don't see anything around it. So I don't like we're putting a five thousand square feet building in the middle of this subdivision that everybody see. So I'll make a motion to approve it with the square footage that the applicant applied for, which was the five thousand square feet.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion from Tyson and a second from Steve. Is there further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Alright. Mr. Taylor, will you walk us through the consent agenda, please?
Certainly. We have, uh, five items for the consent agenda this evening. We have the approval of the minutes of the mayor and council meeting for March the eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. We have approval of the minutes of the mayor and council retreat that was held on March the twenty-second. We have the approval of the minutes of the mayor and council work session that was held on April third, twenty twenty-five. We have an approval of a change order in the amount of ninety-three thousand, six hundred dollars with Southern Utility for the P and K Social Circle Elementary School Gas Main Extension Project. As we discussed in the work session, they hit, uh, more rock than what they actually, uh, expected and projected as part of their, their budget. This is a, a project that's been funded by the gas fund. And then, uh, the last item is approval to surplus, uh, police vehicle Dodge Charger VIN two C three CDX AT four GH two five one eight six one. Uh, that particular police car is a two thousand sixteen that is in dire need of some major repairs and is no longer serviceable to the city. Recommend approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Nathan? Alright, got a motion by Nathan and a second by Tracy. Is there further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. Under new business, we have approval of a contract with InterDev for IT services.
Mayor, the city has been, um, uh, in a long-term agreement with VC three to, uh, to be a, a third-party provider of our IT services. It is time to, uh, change that relationship. Uh, we're no longer satisfied with the services. Uh, we attempted to bring that house in-house this year. Uh, we could not find, uh, anybody at the, the, uh, salaries that we could afford. And so we went back out and evaluated other IT services providers. We are recommending that we, um, enter into a contract with InterDev. Over the life of the contract, yeah, their, their proposal is, is approximately ten thousand dollars less than uh, VC three would be over the life of the contract, so we recommend approval of entering into an agreement with InterDev.
And what all is that including in the?
It's all of our IT services, includes backups, um, means full services, licenses, IT support, you know, recommendations for equipment.
I guess I would hear it last, last week. So was it a reason, did we bid this out or we just talked?
Since it's a service, not necessarily has to be to bid out. We did talk to, I think, uh, four different service providers in addition to VC three. And, um, we talked to, I think, went out of, out of, uh, Athens. Um, InterDev is very highly recommended. Uh, we've actually, I've actually used them in previous city and Tony Joe I know has used them in two previous cities. They provide the same type of service with inter, with, with, with government, um, IT, you can't necessarily go out to just anybody. It has to be somebody who is G, has G C I C certifications and all that, so.
Yeah, I, I just noted this, it was more than, we only see it two numbers. I was just making sure.
Yeah, it's, it was a. It was, it was, it was probably a good eight-month process or more to evaluate everything.
Eric, who manages our, uh, email?
As of today, it's VC three.
Will you move it over to this other company eventually, you think?
Yes, we're looking to sever our agreements in relationship with VC three. It doesn't make any sense to have multiple service providers, especially at the cost that, um, VC three is on a monthly basis.
Next item, approval of change.
I'll make a, a motion to, yeah, sorry, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, uh, InterDev, um, as the new IT provider.
Second.
I don't know who won on that one. Take a motion, motion from Nathan, a second from Steve. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is approval of a change order with MHB paving in the amount of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents for widening the intersection of Annie P Henderson and Leggett Drive.
Yeah, so, um, again, as we discussed in the work session, uh, when the pickleball courts were under construction, um, MHB is the contractor for that. Uh, we were standing out there and we observed, um, tractor trailers trying to pull out of Leggett Drive and they just simply don't have the swing room without going on to the, uh, parking lot that's being created for the pickleball courts. And so in order to, um, have that parking lot last as long as we want it to last, um, we looked at it and the best solution is to widen that intersection. We, um, city staff has actually taken it upon themselves to redo the, um, the drain that's there, uh, the culvert under the road. I know that the railroad has been out there and they redid their part. And so since MHB is out there doing the work, um, we can use the same unit pricing on pavement and recommend, um, doing it as a change order versus going out and bidding it and maybe having somebody different there than MHB doing it and further disruptive service in that area.
Steve, does that affect the railroad need, what do you think?
We just, we extended the pipe to keep those trucks from running off in that ditch is all we done.
Yeah.
And C extended their pipe.
Yeah, there was, uh, you know, Master Rack has been doing a lot of, moving a lot of cars back and forth and, I mean, we stood out there for probably three or four hours one day. And I, I, without kidding, I'm, I'm sure that there's probably a hundred tractor trailers over the course of the day through there making that swing room.
So what, they can't make the, what, what turn they trying to make?
If you coming from, if you coming from the
Leggett Plant?
From the ball field. Is where they're coming in, they can't make that turn and turn in there because of the
They can't make the right turn into the
And then when they come out, they can't make the turn to come back, to go back out because of the
In the past, they were using that parking lot.
Right, they were, they were using the parking lot as, as their swinger, which we don't want if we're gonna have cars parked there for pickleball. So.
There gonna be a grass area there too. They gonna keep it towed up.
So widening that intersection actually, um.
Probably needed to have been widened years ago because there was two tractor trailers hung up over there within the last month in that ditch before we widened it. In the morning after we widened it, I went back over there and left the pipe, the old pipe sitting there and they had actually hit the pipe and knocked it back down in the ditch.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Tracy and a second by Nathan. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number three.
Um, item number three is, uh, to authorize reduction of speed limit on South Cherokee Road from Corinth Church to Ash Street, uh, from forty miles an hour to thirty-five miles per hour. Uh, we recommend dropping that, two thirty-five is currently forty. This is contingent upon us being able to get the approvals from GDOTs. Uh, there is a question right now about whether there is enough distance from the bypass to where it's currently forty that would allow step-down speeds, um, as required. So this is, this is, uh, going thirty-five miles, uh, per hour contingent upon GDOT approval.
And thirty-five starts where now?
Thirty-five starts at Ash Street right now.
Okay.
Actually, it goes to thirty at Ash Street.
So it goes from forty to thirty?
Right.
Okay, entertain a motion contingent upon, uh, this state.
So moved. I'm sorry.
Second.
Motion, motion by Nathan, a second by Tracy. Is there further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number four, approval and agreement to designate Main Street as the recipient of hotel motel tax funds.
So we currently, um, every once in a while, we will get a very small check, uh, for hotel motel taxes because there, um, is an Airbnb, Airbnb somewhere in the city, um, that has one or two people, one or two bookings per year. And so, you know, one booking, you're entitled to collecting hotel motel tax, but, um, in order to spend it, uh, city governments can't spend hotel motel tax money. Um, and so you have to designate a third party who's, who's, uh, who will use that money for, um, tourism, uh, type of activities. And so, uh, the Main Street Commission forms that, um, does that responsibility for us in the city. And so they are the logical recipient of these funds and I recommend approval.
So has that money just been sitting, sitting there for the last couple of years? I know it's not much.
Yeah, it's, it's what, probably about fifteen hundred bucks.
Okay.
Total.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson. Uh, further discussion? All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And our last item under new business, a resolution to name a voting delegate for the twenty twenty-five Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia's annual election.
So the, um, annual election from the Municipal Gas Authority of Georgia is always held, um, around the first week or two of May. Currently, the, uh, delegates, voting delegates are myself and Robbie Groves. Neither one of us will be going to that conference this year, and so, uh, we recommend that the voting delegate be, uh, Rusty Johnson. He's our gas superintendent. And then the backup delegate will be Brian Trent.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Steve and a second from Tyson. Is there further discussion? All in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Do we need an executive session? Okay. Alright, uh, need a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Mayor, take a motion from Tracy.
Mayor for real estate and potential litigation, correct?
Yep.
And personnel.
We actually probably want to designate all three to win, yeah.